All rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the minute delay in the start of today's meeting. We had an executive session on some matters of litigation and personnel. Presentation from the community garden, right? You're up first.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me come and give you an update on the community garden. I'm going to preface my remarks by saying the last four days gardening has been on my mind. I attended the Philadelphia Flower Show. And I was very interested this morning in the Inquirer. It said that this year's flower show was the largest attended even over the Disney theme of last year because it was a national parks, natural areas, and the like. The reason this evening I'm going to update you is that we have followed your suggestion. We went through and put an article in the newsletter to the residents. I hope you had an opportunity to read it. And it came out with the idea that if you were interested, please get back to us. And then we sent questionnaires out. Those questionnaires were responded. We had 49 favorable responses. We have the site, as you all know. It's perfect. It's -- I was out walking it again today, full sun. It's great. My question to the board is what does it take to move forward and to try to find out what the next step like? I have no idea. Do we need 49? Do we need 109? Do we need 69 responses to elicit the next step, which is finding out what a parking lot, gravel parking lot's going to cost, what a fence is going to be? Or do we have some number that we have to reach before we go to the next step?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know how many people are going to push this.
Yeah. Can I interject?
Sure.
At the last EAC meeting, I prompted Ray to come. Because of this very question, they said, is there an uncharted territory? They don't know, you know, well, they're just getting their feet wet, obviously.
Yeah.
And they asked, what have we done before? And I said, well, we haven't done it either, obviously.
Uncharted for us, too.
But that said, Ray explained that certainly it's beyond his capacity and the members of his EAC, the volunteer board, to maybe go too much further as far as being able to collect information and so on. And what I suggested was, well, you need at least establish a baseline as far as, you know, what are you, as a committee, satisfied with as a response to say, we suggest going further? Now, he has almost 50 members or potential users. I said, beyond that, because we haven't done it, we can't say 50 is the right number or it's 100. But he, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but you're looking for, is there a way to vet some of this internally? Meaning, you know, for practical purposes, he doesn't know, like, what does a parking lot cost for him to try to figure out? You know, and he knows.
I don't know what a fence would cost to put it up, but whether or not it's economically feasible for the township to even consider doing it. I know we've got favorable responses and people are interested in doing something.
It sounds like if there are people interested in doing it, we're going to give those, we're going to say, we're going to invite those folks to express their interest in stepping up. I hear you're not taking it on necessarily.
Well, I don't know what to do.
I mean, EAC, I mean.
Yeah.
And I know the township isn't going to take it on at this point. So it, I mean, it's available for, I think, am I, are we taking this on? I mean, are we building a community?
I think if he's soliciting, first off, just whether or not you have interest, maybe what they should be doing is soliciting help, you know, I mean, to at least even get that information together. I mean, is that right, Ray? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, the people who have responded, and I talked to some of them, are saying, okay, good. When will the land be available? What's it going to cost to put these plots together? Do I have to commit myself to two years? These are questions that I don't want to commit to anything without passing it by you.
You know what would be helpful? If we could do some research on what, how to set up a community garden? What that would look like?
Well, I know that.
How have people done it?
Yeah. I've been to Buckingham, I've been to New Britain, I've been to Conshohocke. I know that they're, they've put, you know, their foot on the ground, so to speak, and they've got them up and running.
I think there has to be a grant, you know, a large community interest. And that's coming, not necessarily from the township, but it's going to, you express, there's an expressed interest. And what does that translate into if people are interested? And I guess we can develop the.
Well, that's, I guess the number is, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think Dick could probably come up with, you know, we need to get water, we know that from the information we've gathered from others, we need to have water at the site. We're going to need to have some sort of little parking area.
Right.
And we're going to need a permit from Lower State Road, right, Mario?
To get on there.
To get on there and make like a little driveway and stuff. So, I mean, that's going to be, could be stoned, but we're going to need to.
It doesn't have to be, you know, an elaborate.
I mean, Mario and Dick could probably put their heads together for two seconds and come up with a little back-of-the-napkin framework for accessing the site and what those sort of initial costs. My guess is.
I think we, I think you're right. I think we need to come up with that estimate. And it's a 20-minute discussion with you and Mario, you know, doing parking lots, doing stormwater, road access parking, what do we think this is going to be? And is it worth doing that for 49 people? And now, tell me.
But that, that number is going to increase. I believe as spring develops, more people are going to be out kicking around.
How long have we been advertising this? I forget exactly when you first put it out.
This was the newsletter for winter-spring 2016. So this was the first time it went out.
First time, okay.
When that then responded, we got 49 positive responses. And I think we'll get more. But I don't know if we should push to get more or what.
Can you identify yourself and go to the microphone?
Go to the microphone.
I'm sorry. We are televised.
Hi. My name is Samuel Klotney. I live on Pebble Hill Road. And the question I have is, the area that is designated, do we have an idea of how many garden plots it will sustain? It might then give us an idea to work backwards from.
Well, it's 10 acres. So it got plenty of room.
Okay. I didn't know, okay, 10 acres. Plenty of room. That's all I needed to know.
Yeah. Because, as I explained to someone before, my brother went to Delaware, they put in a community garden, and the people, because they can't do anything in their backyards because they're 55 and over community, they just ate up the community garden, and now they're building another one. So I think the response and the interest is there, but I don't know how far to go with it.
I think it's a little bit more than just, you know, the parking lot and the water. I think they take a few minutes and sit down. I think it's going to be administration. I think it's going to be the infrastructure of having someone build these plots.
I think it's like a dog park. It's kind of like creating a dog park.
Yeah. Okay. That's good.
That was, I think if we use that as the format, I mean, it's a public-private partnership or community partnership with the local government. And you need a committee. I mean, you need a, you need a community committee to work with liaison from the township.
Well, that's why, that's why I was suggesting, while he's getting people interested in gardening, maybe he needs to do a little more than that, you know, just to get a level of interest.
If you're willing to take, you know, at least drum up the formation of an interested group of people to take this on, I know you're not agreeing to do it necessarily, but.
No, I got a lot on my.
Yeah, you got a lot on your plate. So, and I know you want to, like, hand this off somehow, but I don't know, anybody else is sitting here.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you this. Would I have your permission for the people who responded to get back to them and say, the supervisors are looking favorably toward creating this, and we need you to step forward and form a committee?
Exactly.
Is that all right?
Come to a meeting here sometime and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can set a time during the day and they can come and, or evening, and you can see who, see who wants to step up.
Okay.
I also have a question for the 17,500 did not respond. But what, what are other options? Can we leave it? Is it alfalfa out there? Is there some kind of an agreement? We can come with del val? Is there, what are the other options? Instead of running down this road, is there other options to offer?
My understanding with del val is that it is planted in alfalfa, which is a heavily nitrogen-ligium plant, and they're cutting it every year. So they're getting the benefit of the hay, alfalfa hay, which is a premium hay. And until we tell them, stop, we got other plans for it, it will just continue to roll over and be used as a hay field. That's my understanding. I could be totally.
I'm just saying, it looks very nice and it doesn't cost anything.
Oh, it does.
It doesn't cost us a penny.
No, no. No, no.
I just think, I'm trying to put everything, you know, there's only one option, there's several options.
Well, I don't want to give you more to do, but that's where we're.
Okay.
If you, do you get anything from this?
Yeah. It's always a pleasure talking to the entire board. You know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Friends of Kids Castle.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Joe.
Hi. I'm Joe Salvati, chairman of the Friends of Kids Castle Committee. And I'm here today to ask for your voted approval to submit a matching grant application that, if awarded, will help us fully fund the largest section of the playground at Kids Castle for children of all abilities, including those with special needs. You have all that information in your packets. This is the same exact matching grant application that you approved during the last grant cycle, and the township participation in that grant is already included in the 2016 budget. We weren't awarded the grant last time, but we are able to apply again right now. All the facts and figures remain the same, except last time, we needed to raise $63,000 for our portion of the matching grant, and we were able to reduce that amount down to $36,000. Last time, I went through an extensive presentation, and I have all that stuff with me if anybody has any questions in reference to that.
We know the project.
Okay.
Thank you.
So otherwise, all that remains is any questions or moving forward?
I have no questions. So everyone had the opportunity to review this? Any other questions?
Yes. Well, I have a question about the $36,000 that you still need to raise. What are your plans to make that happen?
We're going to continue fundraising as we have. Within the short year, you know, we were able to reduce it from $63,000 to the $36,000. So we're not anticipating any problems. In fact, when the grant actually gets approved, if we're lucky enough to get approved for it, that should be sometime in December. And after that point, from my understanding, we'll have three years from that point to raise funds. So we're not.
That's not the initial.
We're not concerned at all. And in fact, when we can publicize that we got the grant, that's going to create such a marketing advantage for us, to be able to say, give us $36,000, and we'll have a 454,000 place to play at Kids Castle for everyone. So we're not too concerned with that.
There's also the golf outing. We have two, two or three between now and then.
Right.
So.
So.
If worse comes to worse, we'll raise money from the golf outing.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not concerned.
I think the key thing is, is that we did speak to DCNR, and we learned that that was one of the reasons that we didn't receive the grant, is we lost a lot of points by having that out there.
Having what out there?
Having the $62,000 still required on the grant application.
Hmm.
So that did hurt us, and now a lot of municipalities submitted letters. We didn't know we could, but we could submit a letter indicating that, you know, we understand that, we feel they'll be able to reach that goal and.
The letter is going to say, let me be specific, that we're going to guarantee that that gets paid, basically. And obviously, the money's going to come from fundraising.
Right.
But what we're saying is, we have, they have the support of the Board of Supervisors and the people at Dawson Township behind this grant.
And I'll be quite honest with you, if we put in that application saying that it's shovel-ready, that cost us 15 points, and they have a point system on these different parts of the application, and 15 points was a huge amount that we didn't get last time, which contributed to us not getting that grant.
If you hadn't lost those 15 points, would you have gotten the grant?
Well, they'll never say that, but.
Well, did you lose points anywhere else? That's, I'm just.
Not really. I mean, they gave us, you know, they sat with us and gave us pointers about saying different things, but that was the area of focus. Shovel-ready was the, was the key term.
Are you looking for a motion for us to?
Yes.
Say that we'll support and guarantee, if that's the right word, the balance of the funds that are needed? I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Are all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. And then I need a motion to approve the resolution for actually filing the application for the grant. And I can't sign it before April 15th, if that's right.
This one is due March 15th.
Yeah, you can sign it at any time. It's just that that's the deadline.
To the resolution to apply for the grant.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Did all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Visitors of public comment. Please.
Ernie Gash.
Ernie Gash, take the.
I have three comments I'd like to have answered today. The first one.
You have to talk into the microphone.
The first one is, this coming Saturday, is that when trash will be able, not trash, but the weeds and everything else? Now, I have about two truckloads. Can I take one over earlier? Do I have to wait until Saturday?
Saturday's much better.
Okay. I'm just asking for clarification.
You can bring both.
Okay. The second one, I was asked to be a marshal for the elections, I believe it is, and they said it would be down at the back part of the township building. Is that down where the building is?
That's the red building down back, where the Activity Center is.
Down below? Okay. Great. Just so that I, clarification there. And then the other one is, I saw on TV the other night Barb Lyons' program dealing with alcohol and drugs. And I would say, I've been dealing with that an awful lot in a lot of different programs myself. And what happened is, I thought it was an excellent presentation, and I think that the township has done a great job in going along with the entire county here. And that's also, I think, a statewide program. Is that right, Barb?
Yeah. Thanks, Ernie. Absolutely. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Any other comments? Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, April 5th, April 5th, yeah, at 5:00 PM. And we're going to have our annual road inspection at 3:00. Cherry Blossom trip to Washington, D.C. is April 2nd. $50 a person. You can sign up by going to doustahntech.com. And we're going to do a Red Cross Spring Blood Drive Monday, April 11th, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Red Activity Center. Sign up at redcrossblood.org. Dawson Township Community Garden Survey is still available on doustahnpa.org. Please give us your comments, and we're looking for a committee, right? Absolutely. And take it to the next level. Movie tickets are available, $9.50, single tickets, for a single ticket and 27 for a package. Gift packs are available, so on and so on. You can get them at the front desk. And potholes. To report a pothole on state roads, there's a number, 1-800-FIX-RIDE. All state roads in the township can be found on our website. Special, I mean, there's a state road list. To report potholes on the township road, which is also listed, there's also a list of township roads, and you can call our office at 348-9915. Sign up for Ready Bucks. Get alerts on the emergency weather alerts right on your smartphones. And you can do that by going to buckscounty.org. And I think you can also click on our, can we get to readybucks.org somewhere?
I'm not sure if we have the link up for the new, the new one.
Readybucks.org. Oh, excuse me, buckscounty.org for the Ready Bucks signup. Yes. Readynotipaa.org.
That's the new site.
Thank you.
You can get through it. That's how they have it on their website, too.
Okay. Thank you. Readypa.org. All right. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the March 1st, 2016 meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
I have one correction, actually. An addition, actually. On page two, for our second, third paragraph, Mrs. Lyons stated she will not be approving any stipulation until most of the development work is completed. I, I think I said, and what I intended to say, is most of the development plans. So is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah. That correction, with the motion to approve, you accept that correction?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, correspondence from the solicitor.
I received a letter from Gavin LeBoski, who represents Little Branches Pennsylvania LLC. He has a pending application before the zoning hearing board, seeking relief to operate a daycare center in a zoning district where it's not permitted. He's asked for the board to give him and his clients nine months to find alternative location, at which time he will withdraw his zoning hearing board application if you consent to that. Board has reviewed the letter, and I think I just need direction as to how to respond to Mr. LeBoski's request.
Okay. Want to speak to that?
I'm sorry. Speak.
Want to speak to that? Anybody?
That, I don't want to, I would like to shut this down.
Okay.
I think they've had enough time.
We don't want to give the extension.
We don't want to give the extension.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we do not entertain any kind of agreement with Little Branches at this point.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, Mr. Solicitor?
Shall I have, Madam Chairperson?
Chief?
Nothing to report. Nothing at this time.
I have a request from our fire marshal to do an overnight stay for forensic fire death investigation in Huntsville, Texas. He's very excited to be able to attend this, as.
Only if we say he can go.
Only if you can say and go, because they, it's hands-on.
All right. There's a, is there a motion to approve the fire marshal's training for the forensic fire death investigation?
Certainly.
Second.
And is budgeted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else to add?
No, nothing.
All right. Township bids.
Supervisors.
Oh, supervisors comments. Does anybody want to say anything?
I don't have anything. I'll yield, I'll yield my time. I did not have any meetings.
Okay. No, I'm kidding.
Sure.
What do you want to say?
Briefly, I'll say that to, I know Ray already talked about the community garden. In addition, at our EAC meeting, I think it's, I can mention that we narrowed down a date of April 30th. Is that correct, Ray? For regarding tenders for the native plant work and cleanup, as well as the tree planting, which also piggybacks on the Arbor Day and tree vitalized program that we're looking at. We're trying to, is that right? We're looking for volunteers for that day as well?
That's correct. And some of the four are leading a bird walk. We're not worried.
When is the bird walk?
Same time.
I was saying.
But in the morning, early, right? Yeah.
That's not part of our announcement.
We're looking to be 9:00 to 11:00 on the 30th.
Eight o'clock for the bird walk.
Correct.
I'm sorry. What's 9:00 to 11:00?
9:00 to 11:00 is the volunteering at the garden, native garden for cleanup and that, as well as the tree planting, which is a part of the EAC's Arbor Day plan and tree vitalized program.
I think we have touch-a-truck, too, from 10 to 12.
Bird walk.
Touch-a-truck probably doesn't help your bird walk.
No, it's May.
It's May.
Touch-truck's May.
Follow me.
May 7th is touch-a-truck.
May 7th.
All right. In addition, if anybody, if you haven't heard already, if you're a township resident and think you have a tree of significant, either age and size and such, we ask you to submit that to the township with, specifically to Ray, again.
We're getting a lot of responses on that.
And it involves, if you, he'll come out, they schedule, they have a criteria to measure it and check it and identify. A lot of folks say, I don't know what it is, but it's big, right? So we think you should come out, but hopefully Ray's the expert, right?
I've got trees.
Same thing, right?
Big trees.
In addition, I think Bike and Hike Committee met this morning, and all I can say there is we made, there's some significant progress on some missing pieces or puzzle of the puzzle, trying to wrap up some planned, you know, paths that we're trying to wrap up now for 2016. So I'm on the library and work. I think I've already talked.
No, that's fabulous. Thank you.
Yep.
Great report.
Thank you.
Any other?
Yes. I wanted just to reinforce one of the announcements you made about signing up for Ready Bucks. We had a meeting, Stephanie had organized the meeting on March 9th, and all the surrounding municipalities were invited, and this was to, for, the gentleman's name is Robert Fink, to demonstrate the new emergency management system. And those who are signed up to Google Groups, you should have gotten this as well in your Google Groups, and this notification is on the, like Barb said, on the website. And it's important that we do this. I mean, we've, we've been pushing a lot, as much social media connection as we can have with the residents, but this is a little different. This is emergency management. This is telling you when there are issues. So hopefully, people do sign up for this. I would like to get, I would like to see as the township get to 95% compliance. This is, this is important stuff. So hopefully, we can campaign and get this out there and get people signing up. Because, and it's, and you can just sign up for the little thing, or you can sign up for a whole lot. It's really easy to do.
I'm signed up. Be, be prepared for the warning sound.
You can take them off.
In the middle of the night.
I know, I know.
I mean, it's amazing, it's a noise that you will never forget, it's blood curdling.
Yeah.
Just be prepared.
It's a good system, so I'm just encouraging people to sign up.
It's terrible, sign up now.
Thank you. And Rick, you don't have anything?
No, no.
Okay, we'll be here tomorrow if I do any reporting, so we're going to move on. Township bids, under new business, the first one that Dick is bringing to our attention is the equipment rentals with the laborers and the operators. And they want to do a one-year extension with PK Moore, the existing contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, are we taking advantage at all if it's applicable to any of the petroleum product reduction in costs with this extension?
Oh, this particular bid does not provide us with...
Petroleum products?
Petroleum products, correct.
Okay. Because I know things are, the cost of...
In reality, it will be a little used because we've already bid out our roadwork.
Okay.
So, they're going to do some bike and hike work for us, and that's about it.
Okay, is there a motion to...
One question before that, is there any obligation on our part to give them X amount of work?
No.
Okay.
All right, because I was just looking at the last page, where the, where it says materials cost, this is tack coat and sealers shall be bid out by the gallon delivered to any area in Dawson Township, that's already been done, you say?
The tack coat itself is provided by them.
Okay.
At a fixed price, which is lower than what's on our road materials list.
Okay.
So...
We've already got a deal?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I'm asking, thank you. All right, is there, sorry, was there any other questions?
No other questions.
Motion to approve the extension?
Move to approve. Second.
The extension on the PK Moore contract. All in favor?
Aye.
And then there's a request for the sign and bid post, a sign and post bid.
This is one that we participate with the consortium, and as you see from Dick's memo, to recommend that we go with the low bids in the areas with Chumong Supply for $5,095, Custom Products Corporation for $740, $740, and Garden State Products in the amount of $4,899.80. And the bids from municipal.
So it's Chumong Supply and Custom Products and...
Garden State.
And Garden State, those three, we'll do them all together, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve all three, second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board.
Sweeping bid.
Sweeping bid too.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is another one here, sorry. Sweeping, street sweeping bid, two others. I think I'm in a hurry to get this spinning over.
You can take them together and say you, is there a motion to award the bids as based on a recommendation from Dick John for sweeping and the road materials?
I like that, is there such a motion?
There is a motion to accept the bids as Dick John had submitted for sweeping bid and road materials.
You're accepting one bid, Riley, the low bidder.
Riley, the low bidder, per your memo, Riley for...
Yes, per your recommendation.
Yes.
For the street sweeping bid.
Second then.
And then Eureka, is it Eureka for the, for the road materials?
There are multiple bids there.
So it'd be per whatever's outlined in Dick's memo?
Per Dick's memo. Right, per Dick's memo.
All right, and there was a second to that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now to the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, changes, we're going from 11 to 7. Sounds like a score. Backwards.
I prepared the resolution, I think there was some question from a member of the board who's, we may have unnamed, as to why it was called, it's called the Board, and you guys call it the Committee. Well, all the originating resolutions and the amendments all called it the Board, it just kind of morphed into Committee, so if you're inclined to change its name, you can do that, and I'll just rewrite the resolution and add that change, but it's all up to you folks, other than the resolution does, it does provide for the 11 to 7, as you just mentioned.
I'm very happy to make a motion, we keep it as written, as the Board.
Are you, okay, so, do you, is there a motion to approve the resolution of changing the committee from 11 members to seven members, or is it changing the Board from...
Well, it's always been the Board.
Yeah.
So yes, I'm making a motion, we, we changed the number of members from 11 to 7, as outlined in Jeff's updated resolution, 1,300.
All right.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Makes sense to me too, all right, next item on the agenda is the Drager Property Survey.
We have Laura Baird and Taylor Thompson from the Heritage Conservancy is here.
You guys want to address us, because there are going to be questions about this. The Drager Property Survey, you guys, they want... Want $2,500 in addition for another survey, and $8,000 to $10,000 for survey costs.
Okay, so yes, Laura Baird, Heritage Conservancy, I have Taylor Thompson with me tonight. If you recall, we came to, Taylor came to you, was that several months ago, maybe even a year ago?
Last February.
Last February, with a request to, partner with Heritage to help preserve the Drager property. At that time, we did not have any funding secured for the purchase of the conservation easement, and the township was kind enough to work with Heritage to pay for the first appraisal required to give us a value of the conservation easement. Since that time, we have applied to the Bucks County Natural Areas Program, and the Open Space Committee of the county has awarded the requested amount of the $212,533, which is 50% of the appraised value. Because this property has mixed resources of natural areas of agriculture, it is a very challenging property to find funding for at a county or state level. And the landowners are aware of this, they very much want to keep the property in the family, as well as see it preserved, they're willing to donate 50% of that easement value, which is the other $212,533. As part of the county grant natural areas program, they require a second appraisal and a full boundary survey be done on the property. And we're coming back before the Board with a prop, with a project that has committed funding from the county and the landowner, so we have something, a real project now, and asking if you would consider partnering with us for the second appraisal required and for the survey also required, as part of the project. And as highlighted in the letter, the preservation of this property offers, there are many aspects of it that are important to the community, beyond the scenic views, the agricultural values, but the fact that the landowners are, will allow for a trail easement to go along the road frontage of the property, along, yeah, um, thank you, Alms House and Lower State roads, and understanding how it may fit into current trail systems within the township, or even the future, knowing how important that is with all the trails that the township does work with, if you have a conservation easement that will allow for that, is really a wonderful thing, planning way ahead into the future. So, with that, we would, we would ask the township consider helping Heritage partnering with us to possibly fund the appraise, the second appraisal and the survey for this.
Now you talked about the easement, like for the path, would that be a separate document in favor of the township, would that just be a reference in the conservation easement documents that they'll consent to that?
Most likely, I mean, certainly we can, we can, we can work on that, we had envisioned when we presented it to the Bucks County Natural Areas Program, they do require some component of public access, traditionally that language has been written within the actual conservation easement document.
It comes anyway.
Well, the township would probably prefer a dedicated easement, so that we can do, if we have to do improvements, we don't have to go back and do all that sort of thing, but...
Well, we gave you $1,900 already. What, what's Del Valle University doing? They're not fitting by this easement, have they contributed any money?
They have not, they did contribute a letter of support when we were, when we submitted a grant application to the county, but not, not at this time, no, they have not.
Are you asking them for money?
We, Jeff Marshall, our president, did speak with their president and did ask that at the time, that that could not be committed, but they did offer the letter of support.
And may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How much acreage is involved in the property you're speaking about?
I believe there's about 20 acres of the property.
And how much of that is natural areas versus the agricultural land? Curious.
There's currently seven acres in active ag right now, and the rest is pretty much woodlands and ephemeral springs and stuff like that.
Okay.
It looks like Del Valle University is operating the agricultural...
Yeah, that, that's, I just, I wasn't sure the size, and how much of it was natural area, thank you.
How much is the, is Heritage Conservancy willing to put in against the survey and...
Yeah, we have committed all of our staff time to this, so it's well above and beyond $5,000 at this time, so as a nonprofit, when we seek funding for project costs, we have to go to outside sources. So, we, a lot of times partnering with municipalities for that, or if we can find other grant funds to help pay for that. Now unfortunately with this project, we have applied to many grant sources, 1772 Foundation, County Ag Program, but again, because of its mixed resources of natural areas and agriculture, make it very challenging to necessarily rank high in one program. So to answer your question directly, we are putting forth all of our staff time towards seeing this project through, but as far as having the funding in-house, we don't have the funding in-house to pay for the project costs. And most of the conservation work that we do in Bucks County, North Hampton and Montgomery, we're partnering with municipalities, and we, we find the grant funding for the conservation easement, and then a lot of municipalities will help with the project cost, because those are very challenging to find funding sources for.
I'm sorry, what's our history of that, I mean, I know this is a little different from how we've preserved some property in the past, where the township was actively involved in preserving it, and where, and where we would pay the first appraisal and so on, that was typical, this is a little different, is there any other precedents?
When the township actively preserved property, we paid for the appraisal and all the other surveys and all that sort of thing, as part of that process, we paid for title insurance and things like that, because obviously we wanted to make sure that we wouldn't have our conservation easement extinguished by a mortgage foreclosure, so we paid, you know, a fair amount of money, but obviously we've used either funds from the County Open Space Program, or we had folks that actually donated their conservation easement over the course of time, and we bought some using some of our own general fund.
So we haven't, by point, we haven't done something particularly like those.
Not partnered with, no.
Not exactly this, but...
We put, we... A year ago, we put $1,900 into it.
Ready, yeah. And I did get a quote from Meryl, because we were, I was talking to Laura on the phone, when she said they wanted to come back to the Board, and she had mentioned some pricing, and I wanted to see if maybe the municipal engineer's pricing would be less expensive, and Laura was right, they range $8,000 to $10,000, so we, you know, we were on the money on that one. That's what we typically see for properties of this size, and then too with the appraisal, that we are limited with the, there's only a certain, let's say five or six appraisers within the area that are qualified to do appraisals for conservation easements. So we estimate a value capped at $2,500, so we would put, we asked for proposals from at least three of the appraisers, not the, the first one we had done obviously, but of different appraisers, and it would be, fall within, within that range. One thing I'd also like to mention, if it hasn't been specified before, is having the township on the conservation easement along with Heritage Conservancy and the County of Bucks, so you would be a holder of this easement, as you are on other projects. However, Heritage Conservancy would be holding the main responsibility of monitoring and defending this conservation easement, and certainly, if, if in time, I think Stephanie said, in a hundred years from now, let's say that Heritage Conservancy is not here, and then the township certainly can take on that responsibility, or the county, we will be for a hundred years, 200 years, but that said, as the main holder of the conservation easement, we will take on the main responsibility of annually monitoring the property, just like we do all of our other conservation easements, we've got 10,000 acres in easements, we, we monitor annually, as well as taking the responsibility of defending the conservation easement if need be.
Okay, what do you think, guys?
Just one other question, so if this were, were to happen, do, what access do the township residents have to these 20 acres?
For this particular property, it would be the trail easement that goes along the road.
Just the trail.
Just the trail easement, traditionally, we do not have public access on agricultural properties, as to not interfere with the agricultural uses on the property, and then the natural areas portion, as part of the public access required by Bucks County, this was what we had, what we had worked out with them and with the landowner as well.
I have a question, is the landowner agreed to have a sign on the property indicating that this is a preserved property?
I don't see why they would not, they're, they're very excited at this potential, this is the, the children of the Draggers, that really want to see this property preserved, but we can certainly ask that of them to confirm, but I don't see why they would not want to sign.
And would it be a heritage sign, a county sign, or we've done our own signs as well?
You know what, I think it would be up to, but we could do all three, I know traditionally it's, you know, the, the landowner, the landowner has asked, but certainly if the, if the township would like to have their sign, absolutely, I don't see why that would be a problem.
Just a question about the survey, Meryl, you had submitted this.
Yes.
Does Pickering do the survey, or you, is someone else?
No, it would be our firm doing the survey.
Could Pickering donate the survey?
That's, don't, don't put him on the spot.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to ask, that's a big, that's a big nut.
That's a big nut.
That's a big nut?
No, that's my mistake.
Can I ask you, if you don't get any support, and monetary wise from the township, what is your recourse, what is your plan, is it, I assume the preservation effort's not over, I mean, right?
It will be stalled, to be honest, because we have, we have looked at every potential funding source available for this property, understanding the importance of it within the township and the surrounding area, and so it would stall it, certainly.
Do you need it all at one time?
No, and the way that it would work is, is that the first thing that would probably need to be done is the second appraisal, to justify the value of the conservation easement, so that it would be an average of the two appraisals that are completed, at which time we would then get an agreement of sale with the landowner. The county traditionally does not sign that, but certainly having the township on, that we, we have the landowner committed to this and the amount, and then paying for something as costly as the survey would, would come second after we have a signed agreement of sale. So we look at this over, over several months, maybe looking towards the fall, or maybe even the end of the year, depending on how it needed to be stretched out.
I want to nip on diamond, but why does the first survey cost $1,900 and the second one $2,500, appraisal, sorry, first one cost $1,900 and the second one filled it $2,500?
We estimate, so as I mentioned, we work with a list of appraisers.
Not to exceed.
Right, and not to exceed, so it just so happened, you know, when we look for that, that first quote, that's what it came in at, we, we got, we had received several from different appraisers, so obviously we want, with the one that could work within the timeframe, and, you know, was the, the least amount, we're going to go back now, taking that, that one off the list, what we have left of the appraisers, and doing the same thing.
All right, guys.
Well, I just, can I, can I just soak my own sanity? This is, this is 20 acres, right down here at Alms House and Lower State, where hundreds of our cars and residents go every day, and the option for us is to commit $10,000 to preserve that in perpetuity as the 20 acres of open space. Otherwise, we're in limbo.
And you also get a, you also get an easement for a trail when you got to the point of putting one in?
I, I think, I mean, I'll support it, I, we, we took the first step a year ago, and we committed to the $1,900 for the appraisal, that was the first step in, so I, for $10,000, I think it's, it's worth preserving the 20 acres, and yeah, there may be something else down the road that could, could have done it, and I, I don't say we shouldn't keep working on reducing the cost, but I'm in favor of making a motion to make a commitment of $10,000.
Before I add anything, let me just be clear, there is beyond this, there's no other holdups, if you say, right, besides the second appraisal and the survey work, there's no other holdups.
Right, so we wouldn't be coming back asking for additional funding, and...
We said that in February 17, 2016.
I know, but we said, go ahead.
We, we...
It was Taylor, and I had quite a few questions for her.
We, we had high hopes at that time, that we would be able to seek out additional funding from the other sources that were available. Oh, sure, but also too, as part of this, either Heritage Conservancy or the landowner, we will get title insurance for this, as, as has already been mentioned, every conservation easement project that we do, every easement we hold, we, we absolutely require to get title insurance, and also if there's a mortgage on the property, which there is not, working through the process with that as well.
So you have, you have a motion of a second.
There's a question, comment?
Would, would you have any objection if I could walk the seven acres of natural area for just a sort of a...
13 acres of natural.
13.
13, excuse me, I thought she said seven, I thought there was a seven.
Seven of the agriculture, we can certainly, after the meeting, I'll, I'll get your name and contact information, and then we'll, we'll...
I could walk it and look at it, if I could. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
The only, the only, my primary issue with it is the amount, and I, I just don't like assuming we have $12,000 in the budget with that, and if we can find it, meaning we're going to save somewhere else, and it doesn't have a negative impact on our budget, I'm okay with it.
Well, the motion is for $10,000, can you get it done for $10,000?
Be close.
Well, yeah, so I, I don't see the, so that, that second appraisal probably won't exceed the $2,500, but as I mentioned with the survey, the full boundary survey that we, you know, we will need for, as we estimate, eight, between $8,000 to $10,000, so if that's the...
You gotta work it then.
We can work with her on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so there's a motion and a second for a $10,000 grant here, is that correct? All right, all in question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got $10,000.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, good luck, thank you, thank you for, and make sure, we're going to want an easement, obviously, but...
Obviously they'll work with me on the document, they get the documents, the signatures on it and so forth, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Ta-da, okay. ICMA RC 401 Plan, somebody want to speak to that?
Yes, this is our non-uniform defined contribution plan, and according to ICMA, every six years, the IRS requires through their guidelines, a restatement of all the plans they have. So every municipality across the United States who has this plan has to restate it, in order for ICMA RC to comply with IRS requirements. Look for the Board's approval.
So what do you mean?
So that we can execute the documents and upload them.
Mr. Motion to approve the ICMA RC requirement.
Move to approve.
Compliance requirement. Is there a second?
Second.
Did you hear that, compliance requirement? Cynthia?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty then, next is the, oh wow, Towns and Summer concert series contracts, there are, what, five of them, no, six of them, one, two, three, four, five, six.
You can approve items 2A through F.
Let's do that, is there a motion to approve items 8 through F? All the contracts, from the British Invasion to the...
I got the British Invasion.
To the Pyrotechnics.
I'm being disbanded.
There's also, everybody saw that, additional one of them's on the table.
Yeah, there's one on the table too, for the...
It's part of, it's actually the number, it's B, letter B, but it's just they didn't have it itemized, they didn't have a number on it.
Oh, I see, okay. $550.
Yeah, that's for the outdoor movie.
That's for the, yeah, that's for the rental of the screen, and that was on the table tonight. This is our 21st year, first year of the Thompson Performing Arts Series on the Covenant Bank Amphitheater, we're very excited about it, Karen's been working really hard to put this fabulous group together.
All right, good, is there a motion to approve A through F contracts?
So moved. Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the Treasurers Report for March 15, 2016, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, the Bills list for March 15.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements, we're next meeting April 5 at 5:00 PM, we're going to do an annual, we're going to do our annual road inspection at 3:00 PM on April 5. DC Cherry Blossom Trip is the 2nd of April, it's $50 a person, you can sign up from DoylestownRec.com. Red Cross Spring Blood Drive, Monday, April 11, from 2:00 to 7:00, at the Red Building in the back of the Red Activity Center, sign up at redcrossblood.org. The Township Community Garden Survey is still ongoing, thoughts, committee may be forming, and go to DoylestownPA.org to, to take part in the survey. We want to get it all done by Friday, April 8. Movie tickets are available at the front desk. Potholes, report them, go on our line, and you can see the state road list, and you can see the township list, to report potholes for the state road, 1-800-FIXROAD, and then township, just give us a call at the township building. township, just give us a call at the township building. Sign up for Ready Bucks. What is this, what is it called? Ready Bucks, get alerts on emergency and weather alerts right on your smartphone.
ReadyNotifyPA.org.
ReadyNotifyPA.org. Okay, that's it. We're adjourned, everyone. Thank you very much. There are things to sign.
Good night, all.
Yes.
Good night for me.